I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 16, 2019 Papillion City Council meeting into order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
I got it. Sunday, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Myers, Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things I want to update the council on. And the first is the IAD interchange committee. MAPPA is coordinating the planning and environmental linkage study for the proposed IAD interchange. And so we, of course, have a seat at the table now. And I've asked Mark Sturzma to sit on the committee and represent Papillion, and he said yes. So anyway, we will have a cost share as part of that, a part of that study. But again, that is the first step in defining and designing and determining where that IAD interchange will go. So we are making progress. Also, a comprehensive plan update. Several of you have already been involved in the focus groups, providing input on the comprehensive plan. Thank you for attending. But additionally, there's going to be a community open house on August 14th at the Papillion Landing Field House from 5:00 to 7:00. So I encourage you to attend if you can, because Mark's still soliciting input before he develops the final draft. And I want to offer an opportunity for each council member. Mayor Black, and I think it's important that we sit down with you if you don't have an opportunity to go over that comprehensive plan before it goes to the Planning Commission for consideration. So we'll schedule that as well. And just a quick budget update. Mayor Black, Amber, and I are continuing to meet with council members regarding the upcoming budget. We've met with a couple of you. I think a couple of you already have your meeting scheduled. If you haven't scheduled a meeting and would like to meet with us, if you could please do that. We're intending to get a draft budget out to you by July 26th, because the introduction of the budget ordinance is August 6th in the public hearing, and second reading is August 20th, and the third and final reading on September 3rd. So again, I would encourage you, if you haven't already scheduled the time to meet, to please do that. And lastly, the annual league conference is, you should have received an email, but that conference has been scheduled for September 18th through the 20th in Lincoln. Again, I encourage you to attend if you can, and let Kendra know, and she can make those arrangements for you. That's all I have, Mayor Black.
Thank you very much. A show for the record, Councilman Stube did arrive. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Do we have motion to approve consent?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Klug.
Sorry.
Seconded by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item E1, Ordinance 1848, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R2, single-family residential medium density, to MU, mixed use for the property legally described as Outlot A. Granite Falls generally located northeast of South 114th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is BHI Development LLC, Granite Falls Mixed Use District. This is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? If you'd state your name for the record.
My name is Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, representing the client. So the property we are discussing tonight is located on the northeast corner of Witten's Drive and Highway 370. Granite Falls Commercial is to the west. Liberty Middle School is to the north. Highway 370, again, is to the south. And we have vacant farm ground to the east. As you can see here, the property consists of two different lots. There is Lot 24, which is on the west side of the property. That is currently zoned mixed use. And then there's Outlot A, which is to the east, and that is currently zoned R2. The total site is a total of 19.3 acres. We are requesting just the rezoning of Outlot A to MU. As I mentioned before, Lot 24 is already zoned MU. The reason for the rezoning of Outlot A is so that it can be part of the proposed multifamily Here is a layout of how that multifamily development would sit. The apartments, and Lot 24, as I mentioned, was previously designated for multifamily within the Granite Falls Mixed Use Development. There was not a mixed-use development agreement as part of that, as they were waiting for the development to get a little bit further along. But it is consistent with the future land use. The apartments will consist of 280 units with a mix of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units, at a total of 14 and 1/2 DU per acre. These will be market rate apartments. Here is an exhibit that shows a little bit more of the vicinity and how it relates to the surrounding uses. Some of the comments that we had previously in Planning Board was we had a right-in, right-out condition right off of Highway 370. That was one of the concerns from the fire marshal and from the city Public Works as well. So working with Public Works, we always had the access drive that tied into Laramie, but we have removed the right-in, right-out condition and moved it to the east side of the property, about 660 feet to the east of where our main access point was. But this will provide a secondary emergency access point in and out of the site in case the Laramie main entrance was blocked for some reason. There is some other comments that we addressed. There is an existing 10-foot trail that follows along Witten's Drive and then ends where the access point to Liberty Middle School is, currently is, that will then cross the street and tie into their 10-foot trail. And we have extended that 5-foot trail to the east to tie into any future developments. Another comment that was addressed was the, there was a need for a community road within the project. I guess it's a little easier on this one. And that community road within the mixed-use, within the multifamily, would be this road here. And what that community road is, it is a tree-lined road that has a separated trail, landscape separated trail, from the drive itself. And that will provide pedestrian access from one side of the property to the next, and then also tie in with the clubhouse and pool amenities. There is also a dog run provided on-site, along with an area for a playground as well. We will continue to work with staff on building elevations. These are the proposed building elevations as submitted. One good thing about these, the way this site lays out, there is, on this site, on the east corner, there is 25 feet of elevation change, the highway being lower than the site itself. And it drops down to about 7 feet of elevation, elevation change on the west. With that, you know, 25 feet of elevation change, a landscape buffer along the edge, and then the way these buildings are set back, three of those four buildings are set back from the property line, from the right-of-way, as much as 250 to 300 feet from the, from the lanes of the, of Highway 370 themselves. So they would be mostly not visible from the road. The only one that would be most visible would be on the west corner. With that being said, I'll make myself available for any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I guess maybe a question for Mark. So this is in proximity to the Highway 370 overlay area, so has that all been reviewed from the standpoint of the, of the structures and the exterior and things like that?
Yeah, we're continuing to work with the applicant on the design of the buildings and the site plan. The request that's before us now is really the change of zone on that, that, just that outlot. At a later time, the mixed-use development agreement will come before the council for final approval, and that's when those details will be finalized.
Public hearing's still open. Ms. Klug.
Just a question. Typically, when we label things as outlots, they're utilized more for like runoff or parks and that, and all of a sudden, it's being developed into multifamily. How's that affecting the rest of that area? Are they keeping their impervious surface at a proper level to make sure that we're not being bad to the neighbors and such?
You're exactly right. We often use outlots for detention basins and things like that. In this case, it's kind of a remnant piece that wasn't specifically defined for a use. They're incorporating into their site to square off their boundaries a little bit, to help with their building orientation, and to make sure that they have enough area to provide the green space that's required, and the detention basins and things like that. So I think it gives them more flexibility on how they provide those, those required improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Vote in council discussion, and vote will be at the next council meeting. Item F1, Ordinance 1841, an ordinance to annex certain real estate to the city of Papillion, Nebraska, to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1841?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Mungard. Of council discussion, I do want to make a statement, though, mainly for education. We've got a number of people in the audience, and I know people watch this. Annexation's not uncommon, but this one that we're voting on actually is the largest one in Papillion's history. So this is a very significant vote. So for education, I just wanted to share a few things about the process. It's about 859 acres, about 3,200 people. That's about a 15% increase in the population if it gets approved. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes for the education. I've had some questions from people that says, "Well, why isn't mine annexed?" Or "Why now?" Just wanted to remind them that it's not an arbitrary process. But we've actually got two different city policies that kind of guide it, and those have been city council-approved. One's the annexation policy. It was established all the way back in '98, I believe, and then revised by the council in 2012. So we're following that. That talks about the purpose of the annexation, as well as the specific process. And then the 2002 comprehensive plan actually prioritized some of the areas. The high priority number ones, we've already done a number of those. Glenwood Hills, Cottonwood were in priority one. The ones we're talking about in this package, actually, most, they, most of them fell into priority two, the Eagles. So we're kind of following the actual comp plan from '02. And so tonight's is kind of an outcome of that. But the formal annexation policy is actually about a five-step process. First is staff has to conduct an annual analysis, and they do that every year, so all the SIDs are used to. Hey, give us your audited financials. We run the numbers every year. They said, "Are we going to be annexed?" We generally say no, and then we walk through the calculation. The main thing of the fiscal analysis just shows that, is this SID or this package going to be net positive cash flow to the city when we factor in our annual revenue and then the operational expenses? So really, it's just a break-even business case, and the numbers are what the numbers are. Then, as part of that process, to understand what the operational expenses are, administration, city administrator assistant, city administrator, finance director will work with each of the department heads, say, "Okay, here's how big the package is. How many lane miles in it? How many parks? Can you support it? Do you need to add people? Do we need to do anything in policing?" So they'll, they'll factor the new cost into the operational expense. And then, in this specific case, the recommendation is, will actually be, I believe, adding two police officers, two Public Works director, I mean, director, sorry about that, two Public Works employees, and then some specific equipment to support that. So that's all in the analysis. Want to a little bit unique about this one, just because of timing, a couple of council meetings ago, we actually, council adopted the new water rates and the sewer rates, and those had factored in. If this annexation occurred, that was in that analysis. So those policies have already been adopted. So passage of an annexation won't affect the water rates, because you've already approved those with this factored in. So that's kind of the, the analysis that goes on by staff every year. Then, once that's done, if they believe there is an annexation package, that'll go to an annexation committee to review and recommend. That's internal staff. That's the administrator, the assistant administrator, the finance director, and the mayor comprises the annexation committee. Annexation committee did meet back in March 25th and recommended unanimous approval. The next step of that, then, is it goes to the Finance and Administration Committee, which is four city council members, a standing committee. And so the Finance and Administration Committee this year is Councilman Glover, Councilwoman Klug, Councilman Mungard, and Councilman Ingberg. A partial committee met, made an approval of 3-0, but did have some questions. So staff went back, did the research based on those, came back, and the Finance Administration, the full committee then met again, I think on April 30th, and made a unanimous recommendation to move ahead at 4-0. So then the next step, if it passes that recommendation, then it goes to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission then holds a public hearing, so anybody in the public can come out and speak for or against. Planning Commission had that May 29th. No opposition came out, and I believe almost every SID, a board representative came out and shared that they actually had been working for that moment and were supportive of the annexation. And so Planning Commission in May made the recommendation. Now it goes to city council. And last council meeting, we held the public hearing, kind of a repeat of the Planning Commission, and then we're at the vote tonight. So that's kind of the process that's been laid out by city council, and we followed that. A lot of people get confused on what SIDs are, and really, they're just temporary financing mechanism. People who are interested in that, go to the city's YouTube channel, and we actually have a very good two-to-three-minute video on what is an SID, and it talks about that. But basically, it's a financing mechanism for development, and so it holds debt, and then it has its own levy to pay that debt down. At the point that the debt is paid down where the city's revenues cover it, then it can be annexed, and that's part of that annual analysis. Talk about it being a temporary financing mechanism. Eagle Ridge 1, which is in this package, was platted in 1998, 31 years ago. A little bit longer than temporary, so probably, at least in my mind, more than time to pick up that. But one of the reasons it could not be annexed before is because Cottonwood was in the way, and you have to be contiguous. So again, our policies and procedures actually think about this. Cottonwood was annexed last year. That created the connectivity to the Eagles, so now we can do the Eagles this year. So that's what it kind of enabled it. So I just want to thank the staff, the four city council members of the F&amp;A Committee, the Planning Commission, that got us here. This is the largest annexation in Papillion's history, so I just want to take a little bit of time for that background. Mr. Sunday.
Mr. Mayor, may I go to the podium? I have some props I want to show on the overhead. I want to ask some questions.
Sure.
On this hype as well. I want to start off by saying I'm not opposed to Papillion's growth. I'm pro-growth. I believe in intelligent, measured growth, and that's the way I've approached this issue. I'll say right off the bat, I am in favor, right now, of annexing Eagle Ridge, Ox Bow Way, and the property at Sherman Highway 50. I think all three of those neighborhoods make perfect sense right now. The numbers add up. I'm not sure that the other numbers do. I'd like to question Nancy Hypes, if I may, in that regard. First of all, Ms. Hypes, what is the current debt for the city of Papillion right now?
I think I'm going to direct it to Amber. She, for the most part, led the, the fiscal analysis, or tag-team between you.
When we, when we met privately about a month ago, I think you told me it was somewhere around the neighborhood of $98 million. Does that sound right? And if the council were to approve everything that's proposed here tonight, that adds another $7.7 million to the city's debt? Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, currently, members of the households in these SID neighborhoods are not paying the same water and sewer rates as citizens of Papillion. Is that correct?
Correct.
And just for the public's information, because a lot of people out there don't know, how much are they paying more than what citizens of Papillion are paying?
Water's one and a half, sewer's double. Or flip that. Water's double, sewer is one and a half times.
So when we annex these neighborhoods, we are losing out, as a city, we're losing out on those extra revenues, correct?
Depends on how you interpret that. The intent of the double water rate is, if you're inside the city limits, you've already paid for the water system. If you're outside of the city, you're new development, you're putting a burden on the water systems. You need to help fund the expansion of the system, and that's the double. At some point in time, you've covered your cost, and now, if you've covered your cost, you're probably oversubsidizing inside city.
Well, my point is that when we're making this annexation decision, you're losing out on revenues that the city's getting now. So you better be able to make up for it on the other end with the increased tax, property taxes, and other benefits that come along with the annexation. That's my position. And I think each of these neighborhoods needs to stand on its own merits. I don't think you want to rob from Peter to pay Paul to make the whole package look good, because each neighborhood, like I think you said, the Eagle Ridge has been there since 1998. It's actually 1988, 31 years. And they do, they do look like, that would be a very wise decision at this point to annex Eagle Ridge. The other two Eagle neighborhoods, I do not believe are ready. I'm going to put up some, these are numbers that were provided to us by, I hope everybody can see. I doubt they can. Is there some way to bring this into focus?
Yeah, and you can zoom on there as well.
This is Eagle Crest, and the number in the yellow there, I'm using the numbers that Nancy provided to us, but the number highlighted in the yellow there represents the lost revenues from the water and sewer. And that's not factored in right now in the calculations that were provided to us, but it is a very real impact economically on the city's bottom line. And Nancy, do you disagree with those numbers?
No, but what I would like to say is that when we start peeling them apart, and we've taken into account Public Works services for the area, the numbers that you see defined on one SID may not be the impact for police and fire that is necessary to happen if only taking one SID. And as you take them singly, you lose the impact of the growth on the state budget form, which could be very detrimental to the city.
Well, shouldn't, shouldn't that have been shown to us in the numbers that were provided, then? I just want to make sure this makes sense, because right now, I'm looking, and I've seen just on Eagle Crest, an annual shortfall of $52,000 per year to the city of Papillion, annually, if we annex Eagle Crest right now. Eagle Hills, similarly, $78,744 if we annex right now. That's every year. We lose that money. River Chase, $36,000 in the hole, every year, from that neighborhood annexation. Now, I want to bring up another issue, too. About a month ago, I think it was at the June 4th meeting, we voted on increases in water and sewer rates for the citizens of Papillion. Correct?
That is correct.
And if I remember right, it was about a 5% increase?
3.1.
And it's going to be more next year, correct?
No.
No? Was, was part of that increase to make up for lost revenues from these annexations?
Ms. Myers.
What I can tell you relative to the water rate study is that operational expenses increased by 3.2%. We are increasing ass, well, we are increasing rates by 3.1%. So .1% of the increase in expenses was really offset by the new growth anticipated, even in spite of, if you will, the annexation. So new growth is supplementing the revenue as well, and that are the new SIDs and the new water users.
Ms. Myers, when, when we met, you were at that meeting, too. When we met, it was Councilman Gaines and myself, and Ms. Hypes and yourself. You remember that meeting. We were told that, yes, indeed, the rates had been raised in part because of the lost revenues from these proposed annexations.
What I believe we said, or what I said, was that the revenue that was generated by the SIDs today was removed from the revenue anticipated in the rate study.
Okay, and do you remember when Councilman Gaines asks for a breakdown of those numbers?
Relative to what percentage it would raise in spite of that?
Right.
Yes, I do.
And I, I think I remember that those numbers were promised to Councilman Gaines and myself, and we've never seen them.
We have attempted to get those from the consultant, and we had not been successful.
Would, would everybody agree that it would be wrong to increase the water and sewer rates on citizens of Papillion who elected us to represent them here today, just to relieve the debt from people that are still in SID? I think we have to ask ourselves that question. Do we represent the citizens of Papillion now, or people that want to be a citizen of Papillion? I, I don't blame anybody in any of these SIDs for wanting to become a member of the city, and I'm sure that everyone will. Maybe it'll be tonight, maybe it'll be later. But for me, and for my vote, the numbers have to add up for each of these neighborhoods. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Before, before I address a few things, first of all, I want to thank the city staff for giving me the opportunity to give me all the answers that I had questions about, both as a Finance and Administration Committee chairman, and as a councilman generally. They were very thorough in providing information that I, that I needed. That said, I think the thing, the mayor went through the process, and I'm glad he did, because when you, when you talk about the process, when, when people talk about, this is the largest annexation, it's 3,000-plus people, I think it's important to remember. The process remains the same whether we're annexing 300 people or 3,000 people. We use the same formulas, we use the same breakdown, and I happen to be pretty familiar with it, because back in the older days, when I was police chief, when we'd go to annex something, there was no rhyme or reason to it in many respects. There wasn't a lot of analysis, and there wasn't a lot of guidance about what needed to be analyzed. And I believe at that time, Chris Myers, myself, and that city administrators at that time sat down and started to put together what's there today. So my comfort level lies in the fact that, that it's the same process, as I said, whether we annex a handful of people or 3,000 people. It doesn't matter. And frankly, when we're talking about annexation, there's two pieces that are most important. One is financial, and one is the services. Well, the financial formula we use answers many questions about whether or not we should annex. whether or not we should annex. We talk about taking our debt and revenue, and I think that the only concern that I really had initially was, when it came to services, obviously, our departments could be affected to some extent, some departments more than others. I wasn't really concerned about the fires, fire, fire performance, because they handle it presently. So, there really is no change there. Police, obviously, are going to have more lane miles and more, more calls, but again, I think realistically, you can look at it, that, that will be handled by what we plan to do when we annex. My main concern is public works, and public works certainly has additional lane miles to plow, they have more streets to maintain and so forth. But I guess the bottom line it comes down to, whether you're talking about police, fire, parks, recreation, or public works, you have to have a little trust in the people that work for you. And when they tell me, this is what I need to make this work, and to make it financially sound, then I think it's time we should believe them. There's not a department head that sits around this table who's ever misled me, that I can recall, or ever did not give me their best effort when it came to annexation, to let me know, can my department handle it or can't it? And if they can't, what do we have to do to get there? Once those questions were answered, then the finances were answered, services are going to suffer, according to the people that have to provide those services day-to-day. Those services are gonna suffer to the existing citizens of the, of the community. So, that, that answers a lot of my questions. And then you factor in, you factor in that the SIDs are out there, worked very hard to bring their debt down, so they were more attractive to be annexed. I mean, that's just the way that it happens. They want to become part, officially part of the city, they already are, but they want to be officially members of the community, and they've worked hard to get their debt down, to make it feasible for the city to do so. It affects our state relationship on our growth, and it would be detrimental not to, on that level, be detrimental not to annex. And contrary to what Councilman Sunday said, I don't base annexation votes on making things look good, and I don't base annexation votes on, on doing a bunch rather than separate them out, because we had some discussion, if everybody recalls a while back, about package type annexations. I believe Councilman Mumgarde initially brought that forward, where sometimes it's practical, or at least we should start looking at the total, a total package of areas, to see if it will work, rather than separate out. Because when you start separating out, then you lose the, the, the volume of, of services that are gonna help reinvest and provide, like we're doing to police officers. Well, those two police officers are gonna be needed, quite frankly, whether they're annexed or not, but this will help get them on board when we need them here. So, again, I think, thanks to the opportunity to ask questions throughout this whole process, it's been a thoughtful one, and I'm gonna support it.
Mr. Sunday?
I'm just gonna respond to the characterization of what I said. I did not say we annex to make something look good. I say the numbers need to add up in a positive way for the city of Papillion, so that we don't have to increase water and sewer rates on existing citizens to prop up an annexation that doesn't make sense yet financially. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying it has to look good, that's all.
Mr. Jaworski.
Yeah, I kinda want to touch base on Mr. Sunday's increase in the water. That's good business. If we have, if our increased cost increases, we have to pass it on somewhere. Every business does that. I don't think with or without this annexation, it was getting raised anyway. It's just the cost of doing business. So, I don't want to look at it that way, and I'm not gonna look at it that way. I believe, when I talked to Chris Myers, and I asked her point-blank a question, and she gave me the answer that I wanted to hear. So, I'm gonna be supporting this also.
Mr. Mumgarde.
I, I listened to Mr. Sunday's presentation and his stated objections, and frankly, they're nothing new, that we've been annexing, you know, we've done a lot of annexations during my twenty-six years in the council, and many of those ideas have been out there, and I've given some great thought to it. There are two principal problems I have with approaching annexations in the way that he outlined. One is the water rates. He suggests that we need to exclude the loss of water, of that double water rate, when we annex these. Well, I go back to the Supreme Court case several decades ago, that said it was okay to charge people outside the city more than you charge the residents in the city. And the idea was that people inside the city are not just paying the water rates, they're paying taxes. And those taxes, in many ways, support the water system and support the governmental entity that runs the water system. So, it's fair to charge people outside the city additional in their water rates to make up for the taxes that they're not paying. But then you annex them, and you replace, and you all of a sudden start charging them taxes. So, now that logic no longer flies. And the only explanation for, for charging the double water rates would be that that's a profit center for us, that it's not just replacing, the, the extra water rate is not just replacing the taxes that are not being collected, but if we put it into the factor, factor it into whether or not they get to pay taxes, then it becomes seen as a profit center. We're losing money. That's the way you've described it, is we're losing money. Well, we shouldn't be in a position where we're, quote, "losing money" by replacing water, extra water rates with taxes, because the philosophy is, they're the same. If we start treating the double water rates as a loss when we replace them with taxes, we could see ourselves in a position where we're no longer able to charge extra for the residents outside the city. That would lead to a major change in how we finance our water system. It would also probably lead to a major change and major increase in the expenses, water expenses of our residents, people that I represent, because we are no longer getting, they're, they're then paying taxes plus water, and the non-residents are not paying the taxes. So, when we annex and replace them with taxes, we can't use the loss of water revenue as a bar, a hurdle, for them to get annexed. And that has been written into the policies that the mayor mentioned over the years, that those policies recognize that what we're talking about there is a balance, taxes and water, and extra water rates. You know, if, if we want to start doing that, I would suggest that the proper approach would be to call for a change in the comprehensive plan, call for a change in the annexation plan, let us debate whether it's a good idea. It's not, this is not the proper way to all of a sudden change the way that these things have been done. Because frankly, those policies, in my mind, raise promises that we have made. When we, when we approve a development under those policies, we are making a promise to the people who buy houses, build houses in those developments, that when their revenue offsets their expenses, without considering the loss of water rates, we will annex them. That has been the policy for years. I see that as a promise made to people, and I am not going to, at this point, break that promise that was made to the Eagle people. So, I'm gonna support this. And, and if, if we want to make new promises, fine, bring up the ideas and a change of the comprehensive plan, the annexation plan, and we can debate it. And then we can talk about, well, whether those are promises, or whether government ought to just be feel free to tell people, hey, build the house there, but you're on your own, we might change how we do things for you. That's not the way I want to do business. So, I'm gonna vote for this. I think it's a very good thing for the city. Frankly, people who are sitting outside the city are an expense to the city. They come into the city, they use our services, they drive our streets, et cetera. It's only fair to the people I represent that, as soon as possible, we bring in the SIDs and let them help participate in the tax load of the city.
Mr. Ingberg.
Well, I certainly said enough already, but one comment I want to make, when you start using the word "prop up," when you talk about water rates, what you also have to bear in mind, when we did one of our water studies, one thing that we found out quickly was that we weren't charging the appropriate rates, because we need to maintain not only our current services, but we also have to budget and have money there and revenue there. Worst-case scenarios, we also have to have revenue generated, so we can continue improvements to the water treatment plant, the treatment, the improvement transmission lines, et cetera. And we found that it was out of balance. What we raised the rates here recently keeps that in proper balance. And Chris could, can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a simplistic way of putting it, but that's really what it did. It kept us in balance. So, anybody that deals with water, like Mr. Jaworski does, for example, you have to plan for those things. So, when you have this lost revenue, so to speak, that's didn't prop, we didn't prop up anything by what raise the water rates. It was gonna have to be done regardless, because we need to keep that balance in that water fund in order to provide the services to the community.
Mr. Gaines.
Well, I'm gonna try to keep this as brief as possible, but I continuously hear people mention finances and finances and the financial aspect of this annexation. But then I also hear people that are saying that we shouldn't figure in water rates. And I, I don't understand how, if you want a complete financial picture of a business or the city, you have to include all the numbers. So, if you look at, at one of the forms that I received from some of the staff, you know, it projects that we have a net profit of three hundred and four thousand dollars in year one. And in actuality, when you include the loss of the water and sewer revenue, we're actually losing about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and I don't feel like these are accurate financial documents. It's, it's my understanding that up until May seventh, or May seventeenth of two thousand and twelve, when the new annexation policy took effect, that prior to that, we did figure in water rates. And I'm not saying that, I'm not even gonna go as far to say that, well, if we're gonna lose money, we shouldn't annex somebody. But I feel like these numbers are not true, transparent numbers. The water rates, the revenue from water, that's real money that's coming in, that has to be made up somewhere else. And that's including, Councilman Mumgarde was talking about, you know, them becoming taxpayers, but that's including them paying tax. We're still losing two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. When we talk about the three point one percent increase in the, in the water rates, you know, when I met with Christine, she specifically said, you know, they factored in some of these losses into this three point one percent increase. And so, I'm thinking to myself, the, the retired couple that lives in my ward, that would have only had a two point seven percent increase or a one point seven percent increase, because we're doing these annexations and we have to make up this cost, they're sharing some of this burden. And I don't understand how, if, if we want to annex and we want to have a loss, that's fine, but the city has to have a way to pay for it, and we have to have that revenue stream to pay for it and not put the burden on our existing citizens. I think, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Sunday, but I think that was one of his points that, and I agree totally with it. And if we, if we go back to the, and I also agree with Councilman Mumgarde, that I think that we do need, well, maybe he wasn't a point he made, but I think we do need to change the annexation policy. I think we need to know what money the city initially invested into this SID. I think we need to know what the SID has paid, and I think we need to have accurate, you know, accurate financials to be able to look at, because if you look at this, you would think, hey, this is a great idea, we're gonna profit three hundred and four thousand dollars. But at the end of the day, the people on a fixed income, the lower-income people, that every penny counts to them, now they're paying for part of this annexation, and we're taking a two hundred thousand dollar per year loss. I don't think that this is, I, I under, I mean, I appreciate everything the city staff does, I appreciate their recommendations, I appreciate the work that they do, but it's still my, I was elected to make that decision based off of a, off of a recommendation. I wasn't elected for somebody to tell me how to vote. And I can't vote, and my conscience won't allow me to press the button "yes" and annex this, while I know that our citizens that are on fixed income or lower income are taking on this burden, and I know we're losing two hundred thousand dollars a year. And I think that it's, I, I don't believe that these, these financials are the proper way to present it to the council moving forward. I think that we do need to look at this annexation policy and make sure that all of these numbers are included in here, so that it is very transparent. It's very clear what we're making, it's very clear, you know, when we passed the water rate increase a few meetings ago, I had no idea that one of the things that was figured into this was the annexation of these communities, or these, these SIDs. I had no idea. And at that point in time, I think if more of us would have known, we probably would have questioned it then. But that's all I'm gonna say, and I, I'm, like I said, I can't support it as it is. I don't think that these numbers are transparent enough. I would agree that a more limited annexation that is profitable to the city, or an annexation in the future, that we can justify where we're coming up with these, how we're going to pay for these losses, and not putting it on the existing citizens of Papillion, I would be in support of something like that.
Ms. Myers, there's a policy question there. Did you want to respond to that?
Yes, I just wanted to indicate, Mr. Gaines, I maybe didn't have all the information when we met, so I went backwards prior to the two thousand and twelve annexation policy to the nineteen ninety-eight and pulled out one of the annexation analyses, and it did not at that point either include water and sewer. And I don't think I had that when we met, so, you bet.
Thank you. Ms. Kluk.
Thank you. You know, annexation does become very, very difficult, and to Councilman Ingberg's point, nothing's changed how we do it. The numbers may change, how many people we're bringing in may change, but the rest of it hasn't changed. And so, this one scared me a lot, so thank you. I know Amber and Chris, I must have called you guys sixty times a week while we were going through this. Thank you for the patience to help me get to this. In my mind, the double rates were applied to our SIDs to help offset the cost of the infrastructure when they are built. That's what it's for. It's not really supposed to be a way for the city to make money, it's a way to offset costs that are incurred because these SIDs are building where they are, which is near our city. At a point, they do hit where they have more than paid for their part of the infrastructure. It is good for our cities to have more people coming to us. When more houses are building here, more people are shopping at our stores, we are getting sales tax, we are seeing more people in our schools. I think that's good. It's helping us to have more opportunities for our schools. So, I see growth as a good thing. I do not see the double tax rate, excuse me, the double water rate, as something that they should pay and pay and pay and pay because it's going to our general fund. I see it as something that needs to stop at a point, because they've paid for their infrastructure and maybe even done some extra. They have these SIDs, I asked the question, and I'm not going to remember the exact numbers that I was given, but these SIDs that we are annexing, especially the Eagles that have been out there for an awful long time, they've paid, like, well over half of the cost for our last water plant annexation, if I interpreted the information correctly. And what that means is, every citizen has benefited from an- And what that means is every citizen has benefited from an improved water plant, kind of at their expense. So in some ways, I feel like we owe the SIDS a thank you that, yes, they are putting some stress on our city, but they also are helping us to do some improvements through coming and shopping with us, through paying their double water rates. And that's appreciated. So I don't have the qualms with the water rates. I view it differently than Councilman Sunday and Councilman Gaines. So to me, they are more than good on that part of it. I did have many questions on it. A lot of them came back to, can we really handle this many people at one time? Can we really take on this much more? And so I said, what did the department heads really say? Was good enough that Chris and Amber said, here you go, read what they've said. This is what put my fears to rest, was going through and knowing that we have what I consider high quality department heads that came through and said, Luanne, we're prepared for the staffing. We're prepared. Yes, we might have to hire four or five new people now to handle it, to make sure that we maintain the services for our current people and move forward to provide them for the new people coming in. Department heads, I'm going to hold you to this. I don't expect to see a whole lot of requests next year for more people based off of the annexation. Got it in writing now, okay? But I believe you. I believe that this city is ready for a 15% increase in who's going to be inside. So I am supporting this after many sleepless nights and an awful lot of calls to City Hall to get my questions answered. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glover.
There's probably nobody on this council that was more outspoken and harder on the staff than I was when we first started this process. For that, I apologize to Amber and Chris. Part of that come from not necessarily the annexation piece itself. It come from the process that's used to get to this point tonight. And part of that is, you know, there's probably only two council members that have, maybe three that have been through an annexation before that are on this council at this time. And it is quite a process that you go through to get to this point. My, as I worked through this process and the two lengthy meetings that we were in, what it boiled down for me was that I didn't like our process that we're using. And I've been assured by city staff that we're, that we're, are going to make some changes and hopefully we can see those in the near future. Because I think it will give the city council a much better understanding of where we're at, what we need to do, and where we're headed. And, you know, the double water rates, all that kind of stuff figures into an annexation and you're always going to have discussion about that. And there's always going to be revenue that is going to be lost over that. I don't see any other way around that. But I've been assured through all my questions and all the concerns that I had that, that we will make this process better, have council have a better understanding of how we're going to move from one point to the other. And I would say I'm going to support this issue.
Thank you. Mr. Sunday.
I have a general question. How about people that live on acreages that are not part of an SID or a farm that might be hooked up to the city's water? Are they also paying the increased rates for sewer and water?
Mr. Mumgarth mentioned the Supreme Court case, basically what was defined in, and actually at the Supreme Court was, we have two classes of users. And those classes are either inside the city limits or outside the city limits. It really has nothing to do with SIDs. It's just you're outside the corporate boundaries.
So when we're talking about how long these people have been having to pay this double rate or one and a half times rate, when we're referring to SIDs, we should all be recognizing that there's farmers around that are hooked up to the city water, there's people that live on an acreage that are, will probably always be billed at those higher rates. Am I correct?
If there are, they're probably an exception. Most of the farms are not on the municipal water system. If they are, they're probably an exception. As far as the acreages, the ones I can think of, most of them probably have their own water, community well system. I think of Highland Estates, they actually have their own water system. They came to us a few years ago and wanted to connect ours for emergency purposes and we adopted a rate schedule. But I can't think of many, I'm not saying there aren't any, but there's probably-
I'm intimately familiar with at least one farm that is, that's on the city's water.
I said, there's probably some exceptions, but as a general purpose, most of the farms and the acreages are not.
I just wanted, beyond that question, I wanted to echo something Councilman Gaines said, and I think he did a lot better job of articulating it than I did. But when we, when we talk about the impact, the economic impact on the people here in Papillion, the voters that elected us, I think that has to be our first allegiance. And it is, it's mine, I know. When I'm, when I'm raising water and sewer rates on some person or several families that are on a fixed income, and there's a lot of elderly citizens here in this community that are on a fixed income, and we've just raised their rates in part because of this annexation. And I still would maintain that there's time still to back up on that and readjust those rates and vote down some of these neighborhoods from being annexed right now. And although it sounds like it may be a losing cause here, I'm going to offer an amendment right now, if I may, that we annex the Eagle Ridge neighborhood, the Oxbow Way neighborhood, and the Schramman Highway 50, and none others this evening. And I would ask for a second.
So I may flip that on you, just for simplicity. I think what you're doing is excluding Eagle Hills and Eagle Crest. Is that right? And you're keeping everything else?
No.
Or walk through them? So you're, hold on, you're taking, so you want to take Walnut Creek Estates?
I don't want to annex Eagle Crest, Eagle Hills, River Chase, or Walnut Creek Estates at this time.
Gotcha. So I'll restate it, just so it's clear, because I think a motion has been made to amend to remove Eagle Hills, Eagle Crest, River Chase, Walnut Creek Estates. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. We have a motion and a second. Council discussion on the motion to amend. Did you have anything else, Mr. Sunday? Do you want to shut your mic off, then it'll go to Mr. Stube? Any discussion on the motion to amend? If not, please vote on the motion to amend. A positive, I just want to make sure you got it clear, a yes vote would be a vote to remove Eagle Hills, Eagle Crest, River Chase, Walnut Creek Estates. Is that consistent with your, please vote?
Two yeses, six nays by Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg, Mumgarth, and Glover.
Motion to amend fails. We're back to the original motion. We're still on council discussion. Mr. Stube, discussion on the original motion.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. And Ms. Kluk mentioned something about keeping things separate. And I guess I look at it the same way from the perspective is that water is a utility that service, and it's a basic service that's being provided by the city of Papillion. Sewer is a basic service and it's a utility service that's being provided by the city of Papillion. It's not necessarily subsidizing the general fund. They're supposed to be standalone and they're supposed to operate and they're supposed to fund themselves. If it wasn't for the fact that city Papillion provides quality service such as water and sewer, the potential is we might not even be looking at these locations as potential for annexation because the fact is there wouldn't be that basic service there available to them. The other thing is, is that we're very fortunate within the state of Nebraska that we have the ability to annex. And one of the things that I always look at, annexation allows for those fixed costs that exist today within the city of Papillion from the standpoint of fire and police and general services and inspections and everything else that goes along with it. There's a significant amount of fixed costs that are associated with that. And when we have the ability to be able to annex areas and bring additional people in, I look at that as kind of spreading the base. And it also provides that situation where the potential is, is that those fixed costs are always going to go up, whether it's medical costs or it's labor costs, all those types of things, equipment costs, all those types of things. That when we bring additional people in to help subsidize those particular costs, we look at the ability for keeping the rates for existing Papillion citizens low. And I think obviously you can look at our property tax rate for many, many years, and obviously we are the lowest in the area. And I think it's because of the fact that, one, we have quality services, two, people want to come here, which again, gives us the ability to annex those areas and bring them into the city of Papillion. There's no question, this is a large annexation, and I question myself with regard to whether we can take this on. But I look at the individuals that go through this evaluation and the process that we go through. And I voted on a number of annexations. And I think our staff, because they've been here a while, they know this and they've done it a long time, I think they have the ability, the experience, and I think they really know how to put these numbers together and make it look like it's going to work. And I don't think I've seen any annexations that we've done in the past that have been a negative to the city of Papillion. So I plan on supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
I'll just quickly, what bothers me about the idea that we need to take into account the loss of, quote, "loss of revenue" from the water rates is, if you take in that position, then you have to take the position that those double water rates are subsidizing the people inside the city. And you have to, if this passes, then if anybody would go to those, that retired couple and tell them, well, your rates are higher than it would have been because we brought Eagles in. Or if this loses, you can go out and say, well, your rates are lower. I kept your water rates down by keeping the Eagle Hills and the Walnuts out of the city because by gosh, they're subsidizing your water rate. And we can't lose that subsidy because that'll make your rates go up. Well, if I can't, you know, if the Eagles and the people in these four areas are subsidizing me and my neighbors in our water rates, then someone's getting cheated. And so if we're going to take that position that we have to exclude, call that a loss, then we have to take the other side of the coin of it's a profit. And that means they're subsidizing me and my neighbors and they're being cheated. And so I can't go down that road.
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five yays, two nays by Sunday and Gaines.
Motion passes. Next is item F2, ordinance 1842. An ordinance to change the official zoning map of the city of Papillion in accordance with section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code to adopt a zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska revised statute 16901, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1842?
No.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any council discussion? And again, this is directly related to the prior item. Mr. Sunday.
That was my question. So a vote yes for this is just a, just a formality to further what's already been decided?
I would say yes. A little bit more than a formality, though. We're actually taking all of our ordinances and applying them to the new residents.
I'm going to vote for this, but I don't want it to be misinterpreted as having been in favor of the annexation itself, so that's all I have to say.
They're a very separate vote, so that is clear. Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Eight yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F3, resolution R190033, a resolution to name the city clerk as a designated agent for the purpose of approving certain special designated liquor licenses. Is motion to approve resolution R190033? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Gaines.
I'm just curious as to, can you tell me the advantage of making the city clerk a designated agent?
That is a great question because it's fundamentally going to change our process. Ms. Myers.
Yes, thank you. It'll help in a couple different ways. Certainly, we don't want to bog down the agenda, and generally you will see those under the consent agenda. But probably more importantly is the timing for the applicant. It will decrease the amount of time necessary to get it approved. Today, if they give it to us, they'll have to wait two weeks for that approval for the next council meeting. This will allow the city clerk, if it meets all the parameters within this resolution, to go ahead and provide that approval to the state so they can issue the permit. So it will carve out at least seven to 10 days from the process, depending upon when they submit it to the city clerk's office.
And the important part on that date, I think, because a lot of people that apply for a special designated don't understand those dates, and they come up and they apply and it's, well, you're too late. So it'll actually, more people will be able to get it. But there's, without getting into the process, there's still, if there's anything the clerk sees that needs to come to council, it's more, it's not a shall approve, it's a may shall. So if there's anything in there, that can still come to the council, as it always did. Mr. Sunday.
Are there some accepted criteria that that designee is going to be using to approve or disapprove?
Ms. Myers.
Yes, there is. And granted, what it standardly says, and I'm going to really go high level here, is if you have seen that special designated permit over and over again, you've already seen it once and approved it, she will have the authority to automatically approve that. If you see a special designated permit that's new, a new event, it will come to you. If it has amplified sound, it will come to you for approval as well. And if she has any question relative to the application, we will certainly err on the conservative side and send it to the city council.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, with respect to criteria, that's a good question, but doesn't the resolution provide that the city council can establish criteria? So if there are elements that we think the designated agent should be considering, we should put those out in a resolution as our criteria, as our guidance as to what you consider when you approve or disapprove a liquor, a special designated license. And that can come down the road, correct?
I think it's item seven in there says that you may, at any point, adopt specific criteria.
You know, frankly, I don't know what those would be, but if anybody thinks, you know, that coming down the road, that that's a good idea, let's do it.
I'll just give a, for instance, that I could foresee possibly happening. If one of the applicants who gets the special license is found to be having sold alcohol to minors and it became a problem, certainly there ought to be some mechanism in place to possibly disqualify that person in the future.
Absolutely. That would make sense to me as well.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F5, resolution R190144, a resolution to approve the Sarpy County and City's wastewater agency's jurisdiction and growth management plan. Is there a motion to approve resolution R190144? I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. We're going to go to item F4. It is a related item, resolution R190138, a resolution to approve the Sarpy County and City's wastewater agency's proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Is there a motion to approve resolution R190138?
No.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Now we're on item F5, resolution R190144, a resolution to approve the Sarpy County and City's wastewater agency's jurisdiction and growth management plan. Is there a motion to approve resolution R190144?
No.
Motion by Councilman Kluk, second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? I'll just note, more for education, again, people watching, if they go to the staff report, which anybody can see, the entire staff report the city council sees, it's all- online, go to page 41, exhibit B, and you'll see a map. The yellow on that map is the immediate growth area, so they can see exactly what the agency's doing and what the growth management plan is. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yays, zero nays.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. Committees, public facilities met. Ms. Ringberg. I'm assuming Ms. Ringberg.
Yes, I was the interim chairman for the night. We need to congratulate Mr. Stube. He is the new chairman of the Public Facilities Committee. Tonight, the only...
Because I wasn't there.
No. We did, our only topic for discussion, if council recalls, that we have been working on doing some redevelopment downtown, specifically in the Second Street, North Adams Street area. Tonight, we received some proposals, the council has not received official proposals. They go next to the standing committee that was appointed. But our discussion tonight centered around whether or not the city wants to participate, and how much, and so forth, is some of the infrastructure to stimulate that project. And so, we did so, and we recommended unanimously, without Mr. Stube there, of course, but I'm sure he would have agreed with us, all three of us, that initially, we're going to assist with demolition of some of the area and buildings that exist, because that was a concern of everybody that submitted proposals to us, because of the cost. But beyond that, we'll approach that as things move forward. But I could foresee a time where we may get more involved in some aspects of the development as time goes by, but we didn't want to go too far out there with it. And so, for now, this will assist in getting it going and getting it developed.
Thank you very much. No other committees met. Any comments from the floor? If you want to come up to, if you want to come up to the, can you come up to the podium so we have it on the record? They listen back to, they listen back to the recordings to do the minutes, and if you could state your name for the record.
I'm Al Stevens, and I'm a trustee with 143. When will the annexation be in effect?
That is a good process question, and I'll have Ms. Myers answer that.
We're ready to quit our jobs.
But before that, I do just want to make a general comment, because comments from the floor actually are a tricky legal item, since we, if somebody comes up to the podium during comments from floor and makes a comment, in general, we can't respond, because that topic was not on the agenda. I'm gonna treat this a little bit different, though, because it is annexation, and that was on the agenda. Ms. Myers, can you clarify that part of the process?
Yes, the ordinance is effective 15 days after its approval, so I believe that would be July 31st.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any council comments? Mr. Sunday.
Yes, I would just, even though I didn't support the annexation for some of the neighborhoods, I would like to welcome all the people from those neighborhoods that were annexed tonight to the city of Papillion.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I guess I have a question. Okay, we annexed 3,200 people. That's gonna make the election, the district bound, the ward boundaries change. That's a process that goes through MAPPA, et cetera, and then there are some notices that go out. What can we anticipate as far as timing on that?
Ms. Powers.
Good question. So, based on our timeline, around the end of November, we would be able, we would have some information back from MAPPA. And I guess early November would be meeting with the subcommittee, with the council, and then have it finalized at the end of November.
Are we working on a goal of having, well, that would be when we get the information back from MAPPA. We have to have public hearing, et cetera. Are we working on a goal of having that finalized, the boundary changes finalized by the end of the year?
Correct. And just to go back to that, that end of November date would be the whole process finalized in time for the December 1st deadline for new members to file, if anyone wanted to file for a city council seat.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks, not very much. Want to thank the staff, a couple of the city council members that took the opportunity, got a tour of Papillion Landing. It's really coming together. So, if we're not able to make that tour, and you want to see it, probably let Ms. Hanson know. You can really start seeing how that, how it's laying out. We also had a good meeting with Boy Scout Troop 60. If you've been following that, the cabin in the park is, looks like it's falling apart. And we reached out to Troop 60 last year, and they were excited about a potential renovation project. And so, we created a partnership between the city and the, and the Boy Scouts to get that restored. It's on city property, so I think we agreed, kind of like with the solder house and the others, it probably is city property. You can't really follow the deed history, because it's so old, and there's been questions of ownership. But I think we're taking the stance, the city owns it, because it's on city property. But what we proposed is what we've done with PVFD, Inc., with the Fire Museum, the solder house, and the schoolhouse, where we could have a lease agreement with the organization that actually cares about it and use it. So, we would have a lease agreement with Troop 60. But before we do that, we need to get it restored, and the challenge was for them to raise the money for the restoration. It was not a small goal. They went through and looked at their engineering, a lot of help from our building officials and our engineers. It was almost a $30,000 project that they gave themselves. So, that Boy Scout troop went on, went and started raising those money, raising that money, and they actually delivered us good news last week. They think they've got the entire $30,000 raised. The next issue, though, was it's in a floodway, and generally, you cannot rebuild structures in floodway. Our building department has already cleared that hurdle, and we have, we have our permits and our permission to rebuild. And so, that project is starting. Mr. Thompson's kind of our point person from an engineering perspective, working with the troop, make sure that when we do start the restoration, it doesn't just fall apart, and we got a pile of logs. But the nice thing is, they, there's a house mover, a building mover, that has done a lot of log cabins and old barns that's involved, and there's actually a gentleman in council bluffs that has done restorations of these types of projects around the nation. So, we got some really good local resources. So, I think our current goal, if I remember right, Mr. Thompson, is probably by fall, that should be lifted, a foundation put down, a floor put down, and it reset. And then, at that point, assuming the integrity is still there, then they can start the restoration of the logs. And then, the other thing we committed to was from community betterment dollars, that if they raise the funds and we were successful on the project, then we would try to get it on the state historical record registry, so we get an official state of historical marker explaining the role of that cabin. If people are not aware, Troop 60, I think, is the oldest Boy Scout troop this side of the Mississippi River. And that cabin is probably the oldest active scout cabin this side of the Mississippi River. So, it really is history, besides just driving down 84th Street, and it's part of Papillion. So, that's a big statement. I just want to thank Troop 60 and Mr. Thompson, Mr. Hosworth, our building official, for all of their work, and Mr. Gowan. The only other things, again, just a reminder, August 14th, 5:00 PM is the open house for the comp plan, if you can come out and see that. And then, the next day, August 15th, and we'll start getting some information, I think it's being locked in. Facebook is offering to bring some experts in and put on a seminar about using Facebook and social media for local government. They're gonna do two sessions. One is more for staff and department heads, that'll be at 4:00. The other one will be for elected officials, and that will be, I think, at 6:00. So, if you want to pencil that in, we'll start getting some more details about that. And the indications are, they're gonna probably put on a lot more seminars about social media online and that type of thing, as a national expert, and they'll probably do it here. Any other council comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Eight yays, zero nays.
We are adjourned.